The second two thousand twenty-five Board of Alderman Meeting is hereby called to order. I'd like to ask Alderwoman Hamilton to lead us in the invocation, which I'll lead by the, I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance after that. Please, please stand.
Please pray with me. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for blessing us with this beautiful day. We especially thank you, Father, that we still have the freedom to come here and do the business of the city. And dear Lord, tonight, as we deal with the budget that we have this coming year, we thank you, Father, for all the department heads and all of the employees that had a part in making this budget a balanced budget. And we pray, Father, that you will bless this budget as we go through the coming year. And dear Lord, as we go into our meeting tonight, we ask you for wisdom and guidance. We ask you to bless our mayor as he leads us into this meeting. And dear Lord, we also ask a blessing on him and his family with the loss of his mother. This we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just one law.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Alderwoman Hamilton, for the invocation. Pastor Calvin King was scheduled to be with us and could not be tonight. We'll put him back on the agenda. But thank you, Alderwoman Hamilton, for the prayer. And special thanks to the board, all the elected officials, employees, team members that reached out during the recent past to my mom. The prayers cards were certainly appreciated, and your presence as well. Board, in your packet, you have, correction, let's go ahead with roll call, please, Ms. Stewart.
Aldridge.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Here, Hart.
Here.
Damage.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thank you, all present. So quorum established. Board, you have the monthly report for the business license in your packet. And then as an FYI, you have a proclamation about Wings Over the Branch Day, which is September the twentieth. I encourage you, if you can, attend that. It's been a great event the last couple of years at our airport. It involves Luke Weathers Flight Academy in partnership with Organization of Black Aerospace Professionals, a great group of individuals that learn to fly and adding to the different type of individuals that we can hire, the different skill sets for aviation, whether it's commercial, cargo, military, so bringing a different bracket to us that's so needed because of shortage of pilots. But I encourage you to make that. It's usually a really good ceremony. You have before you, or you've had before you the meeting minutes of our regular August the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five Board meeting. Any questions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Hamilton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Good afternoon. Nicole, it's my pleasure to present the Mayor's Award to you this month. You were nominated by Director Justin Rose, and his nomination basically says he would like to formally nominate you for the upcoming Mayor's Award in recognition of your outstanding dedication and exceptional service as Public Works Coordinator. Nicole consistently goes above and beyond her daily responsibilities. She is highly dependable, often taking on, often taking on multiple tasks simultaneously and handling each with remarkable efficiency and care. Her commitment to excellence is evidence in everything she does. Nicole arrives early each day and stays late to ensure her work is completed to the highest standard. I will say, there's been a few evenings I've sent some late emails, and I'm like, wow, what is she still doing there? I knew while I was there, but thank you for your dedication. Her strong work ethic, attention to detail, and willingness to step up whenever needed make her an invaluable asset to our team. Her dedication and reliability not only contribute to the success of our department, but also reflect the values we strive to uphold in public service. So, thank you very much. And with the Mayor's Award is two hundred and fifty dollars cash, not out of the tax dollars, but out of donated money from individuals who like for us to recognize performance going above and beyond. So, thank you very much. Board, you have several pages on the operational updates. If you have any questions on those operational updates, let me know, and I can fill you in. But that shows you some of the things that's taken place with the city departments in the last month. Following the agenda, you have your consent agenda before you, items one through twenty-eight. Any questions on those items or any, any motions? Motion to approve by Mr. Wallace. Is it second? Second, Ms. Aldridge. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I should have mentioned earlier, just for the visitors, that this meeting is streamed live on the city's YouTube channel and also recorded for playback as well. Planning Commission, old business, consideration of application for a final plat for Ainsley Point subdivision submitted by Andy Richardson, R&amp;H Engineering and Surveying LLC on behalf of Sunset Creek Farms LLC, Kevin Bynum is property owner. The request is create a single residential lot of point seven eight plus or minus acres. The subject property of point seven eight is at the northeast corner of Hamilton Circle North and Hamilton Circle West, known as sixty-six zero-two Hamilton Circle North. In my understanding, Mr. Young or Mr. Song, that there was a request made to table this item by the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the applicant here? Anything other than just table it for more discussion on the roadways and right of ways? Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Board, if you're so inclined, I know we had this on the docket from last time or on the agenda. Two weeks might have been a little bit quick. Needs to be some more discussion between the engineers on aligning the roadways and the applicants asking that we table it. I guess a date certain or uncertain, Mr. Song?
I've just been thinking when the, everybody can get together around it. Hopefully sooner than later.
Okay.
Mayor, I was just, the sixteenth, the next meeting, and then it can be tabled again if it's not ready.
Okay. Two weeks seem like that'd be enough time for the applicant, sir, for you to be ready two weeks if the engineers are ready? Would that meet your schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am? That used to happen all the time in court. I don't know why. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Board, are you inclined to table this until the sixteenth of September?
Yes, I have no, no problem with that. I make a motion that we table this issue for two weeks. It'd be September the sixteenth.
Thank you. To September the sixteenth. Motion by Ms. Hamilton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Damage. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Tabled until September the sixteenth. This is Planning Commission, new business item, public hearing date for consideration and action on motion declaring the condition of the following properties to be amended to the public health and safety and directing either the city staff or contract labor to clean the property forthwith. List A has been mowed and cleaned, and list B still has issues. Is that correct, Ms. Campbell?
Yes, sir. There've been a few changes since the last meeting. The first two items that you see on list A, these were tabled at your August fifth meeting to tonight, and these are properties along Parkview Boulevard to adjoining properties. And there has been some additional work done, as you can see from the pictures that were taken on August twenty-seventh from the last meeting. Some additional maintenance was done. I do believe there are residents here from the Oaks at Parkview who do wish to address the cleanliness of these lots. Of course, the standard here is whether or not this is creating a nuisance, which is what the, you know, proposed motion would be. In the opinion of staff, it has been cleaned to the degree where it's not necessarily creating a nuisance. However, you know, it is certainly acknowledged that it's not manicured, and there are some other issues over there with respect to wildlife and drainage issues and things that the Oaks at Parkview residents brought up at the last meeting. But again, just in terms of the grass, it has been mowed down to the point where it's not at a nuisance level, although, again, it could stand some additional trimming or weed whacking or those types of things.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Campbell. I know I drove by around one o'clock this afternoon, and it was cut pretty short, pretty short. There's a couple of things, as you see the taller weeds where the street, the little dirt road goes out to the street, Bush hog is not going to cut that, obviously. Those are weeds that, it is a field. But is there, is the, is the owner of this property here, anybody associated with mainland, MCA, OBLLC, the Parkview Boulevard addresses, is the property owner here? Is just anyone else with Parkview that would like to offer public comments? Was anyone like to offer public comments from Parkview on this property? Okay.
Because you still have that Anderson lot on this big.
Okay. Come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to address y'all this evening. We are very pleased that the lot was finally maintained to a standard that we're happy with. I believe there was someone there Friday that actually came in and did a little bit more. I don't know what day y'all took the pictures, the twenty-seventh. So, there has been a little bit more since these pictures, I believe. I was over there today. I'm hoping we can move forward with some of the infrastructure issues. And the Parks, Parkview Oaks community is going to reach out to the mayor and see if we can come up with some solutions soon. So, we look forward to having a meeting with you in the next thirty days.
Ask you if you will. I know we've met you, but if you'll give your full name and address so the clerk can capture that.
My name is Janice Phillips. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at Parkview. My address is eighty-six seventy-three Parkview Oak Circle.
And you mentioned infrastructure needs. What type of infrastructure needs are there?
There are culverts that have collapsed on this property. So, at the retention pond or the original pond at the park, it has nowhere to drain to because it's all stopped up. So, it backs up into our property, ruining our fence. We have put in some stonework to try to alleviate it getting up into our area of where the condos are. But it's, it's protruding our property by about three to four feet when we get a good heavy rain. So, we've got to come up with a solution on where that water from the lake, because it doesn't have, it doesn't have a drainage system. So, it has nowhere to go but over into our property. When it gets over to the Midland property, the drainage system there is, the curbs and all are collapsed. So, when it pours down, it pours into our road, which over, over time, it causes ours to get overfilled and flood over into the street also.
Okay.
So, we need to try to figure out a correction on that drainage system.
C.O.L. Riker, is this, you've looked at this, and you're continuing to look at it? Is that?
Yeah. Yeah, he came, and we walked the property and looked at the lake, and we're going to be working together to try to come up with a solution. So, I was very pleased that Mr. Riker came and spent the time with us to go over the property together. And there are a few other county issues we'll need to address on the other side, close to the library. I hope the library got their water fixed today. I noticed they had a water leak.
That wasn't the city's leak, though. I disclosed that when I met with them last week. That's the county coming to fix their leak. We have some water leaks, trust me, but that one's not ours. The county's going to fix that one. I talked with the librarian about that.
So, we look, we look forward to working with Mr. Riker and the engineering to figure out where we're going to direct that water to, to keep it off our property.
We know it's going to go downhill, but you'd like it to go somewhere besides your yards. I understand. We'll look at that then, Mr. Riker.
And we appreciate the city's time to address the issue with the mainland property. You know, it's been an empty lot for us for eight years now. We're like anybody else. We would like you to see some revenues off that property.
You'd like to do what?
We'd love to see you make some revenue off that property. It's, it's a nice piece of property that needs to be developed.
That's strange to hear that here, because most people come forward, they don't want anything developed near their home. They won't, do not build anything. But I understand what you're saying. You want the right thing built there.
Yeah, we want the right things to be built next to us.
That facility that it started out to be would be awesome if that took place.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Adam.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And Mr. Riker and I work together and, and look at that drainage some more. Any other public comments on these items, for or against? You're here on behalf of that, the application, or you're here against that application?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a few more on the, on the list that we may want to review.
Shawn Henderson, one three zero six six Sandborne North. Is anybody here related to this property, for or against what's going on?
Mayor, this, this one was partially, you can see the pictures on the projection here. These were pictures taken on August twenty-sixth. Since that time, the front yard was mowed, and it looks like maybe a neighbor or something did this, because when you go into the backyard, it's still in that condition. So, this one's probably been partially cleaned, but staff would recommend that it be maintained on the list for further action. And then this next one property, this is the Weaver Property, seventy-nine hundred Weaver Road. There are two parcels adjoining each other. These are the pictures that were in your packet from August twenty-sixth, and this one has been mowed. You can see on the picture from today. And then this is the second property right at the corner, just to the south, the adjoining property. And these are the pictures that were in your packet from the twenty-sixth of August, and today it has been mowed. So, we're really down to only one left on the list for further action, which would be the one three zero six six Sandborne North property.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anyone here from the public to speak on behalf of this property? If not, Board, any questions on, obviously, the backyard, the photos to the left seem to be the concern instead of the ones to the right?
Is that house vacant?
That's what I was, has it been vacated? As far as I, it appears to be vacant. I'm not sure if code enforcement knows that for sure. But I, it looked to me like sometimes in these situations, what happens is a neighbor doesn't really want to look at the front yard, so they just go over and mow it. But they didn't get into the backyard. As you can see, it's just grown worse from the orig, these are the original pictures from, from back in, in August. And then you can see the front's been done over the weekend, but the back has just grown even more. So...
Yeah, tall as that swing set, top pole, isn't it?
Still got a Christmas tree.
Christmas tree, Christmas wreath. They got an early start. Any questions or motions, Board?
Motion to clear that one with my help. Minus.
Got motion for Mr. Dickerson to declare this property, one three zero six six Sandborne North, as amended and be cleaned up. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Who's that? Who's second?
I'm here.
Mr. Collins, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Following the agenda, under old business, consideration of bids received August the eleventh for two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six, street supplies, it was tabled until this meeting on August the nineteenth. As you see, the list of street supplies, Board, one, two, and three are actually supplies for whether it's street, water, wastewater, or natural gas to finish out this fiscal year and enter next fiscal year. You see the bids and recommendations being made.
And Mayor, there's a lot of detail there. Recommendation is for the low bids in each case, and so they just want to take that as a whole. There's not necessarily the requirement to go through the detail on each one.
Thank you.
It can just be a recommend, a motion, second to vote to award as recommended by staff on both one, two, and three on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. That's everything from coal mix, hot mix, to water meters, gas meters, for, to finish out this year and into next year, if you're so willing to take them as items one, two, and three. If there's a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Collins, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wallace. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four, consideration of bids received August eleventh for annexation, Water and Sewer East Area, project number two. It was tabled until this meeting on August the nineteenth. Mr. Swims, this is going to trade, recommended it go to Trade Construction Incorporated for a base bid of three million one hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Mr. Swims is not with us tonight due to his father's ill. So, that's the lowest and best bid per engineer.
The bid tab is attached.
Four bidders, this is the lowest for the board.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wallace, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Yes.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me.
Mr. Tatum. But Board, I want to walk into this as gently as I can. I'm not here to embarrass or berate you, but you were doing Pleasant Hill Road Widening north of Goodman Road.
Yes, sir.
And it has been delayed an unbelievable amount of time. I know that you advised some of it was due to locates being made by the city, having to locate different lines. And even if I set a month on that, Board, these next two contracts for five and six deal with this same company, Phillips Construct, Contracting Company out of Columbus. And they were the lowest bidder for those two items, five and six, but they were the only bidder. This is one of the things that is very unique, I guess. We need it done because the, the grant from the FAA is going to timeout if we don't do something. But I wanted to hear from Phillips Contracting Company, because they were given the Pleasant Hill Widening job to start on or before four twenty-two, and they were supposed to be complete on twelve eighteen twenty-four. So, we're a long way from twelve eighteen twenty-four, and there's five hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages that can be charged against Phillips Contracting because of this. And I'm not taking you to task. I'm just saying, I've only sat in this chair for four years, and I've had phone calls, unbelievable. They have told me up and down about how long it's taken to do that, and how come we can't get it done by the time school starts back. And then I get your letter, and I thank you for putting it together. I thank you for being here. But here we are in April, three days of rain, three days of drying time, so missed six days of work. May, thirteen days of rain, thirteen days of drying time, twenty-six days out of thirty-one missed. June, the month of June, eight days of rain, eight days drying time, sixteen days missed. And then we continue into past twenty-four, excuse me, December, twelve days of rain, twelve days of drying time, seven days of unfavorable work for dirt work.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's just, that's hard for me to comprehend. I see people working in the rain all the time. I know our men and women do it. Then we get into January of two thousand twenty-five, nine days of rain, twenty-two days of drying time. How in the world? I just can't fathom that. Then in February, ten days of rain, eighteen days of drying time, twenty-eight days out of twenty-eight days, no work. In January, thirty-one days out of thirty-one days, no work. In March, thirty-one days out of thirty-one, no work, eight days of rain, eight days drying time, fifteen days of unfavorable weather for dirt work. Well, I just don't know what the men and women do that have these jobs if they're missing all this work. Now we're into April, twelve days of rain, twelve days of drying time, six days of unfavorable work, thirty days missed out of thirty days. Sixteen days in May, sixteen days drying time, thirty-one days missed, zero days could be worked. I'm just, that's just beyond, I'm baffled. And here we are with eight point eight mil- I'm just, that's just beyond, I'm baffled. And here we are with eight point eight million dollars that, for what, for work at the airport that we're being recommended to hand over to you, and I just want to be reassured on what in the world is taking place. I mean, school was going on. I called you. I'd make a plea. I said, please get this finished before school starts. I know you double timed it, but I also know that engineering sent people out, one person on the job site, nobody on the job site, two people on the job site. And then we get a full crew, and you sent me a list of references and millions of dollars worth of work, and I'm happy for these people. But I'm not happy based on the phone calls I got, and I know the board got phone calls as well. So, why should we hand eight point eight million dollars work over to you when this just has been a fiasco? Not saying you're to blame, but something went wrong. Nobody, how do you miss, how do they miss that many days of work due to weather?
So, if I could explain a little bit about Pleasant Hill, um, you know, we did get started somewhere around, uh, five thirty. That's what time, that's when we started to work. We encountered a bunch of fiber optic lines. We were instructed to move off somewhere around, um, the end of June. We did move off, and I submitted a request because I was forced to move off, a change order request for more time and more money for demobilizing, remobilizing. I got notified on September the third that all the fiber lines were moved out of the way. Um, it was not until October the third that I was notified that I need to get back to work immediately. And I said, well, I told you that I wasn't coming back until we get something resolved with a change order. At that point in time, we got something resolved with a change order. I went back to work on ten seven, at which everyone knows that when you start getting into October, November, December months, you get rain. I did all I could with pipe work and underground surface. We started getting rain, and from the middle of November until June third, that project got sixty-four inches of rain snow, and what we were doing was dirt work. If we were in a different part of the country, the dirt would dry a lot better. We have silty, sandy dirt up here that holds moisture, uh, that will not release until it gets hot. So, I took and incorporated some cement, spent fifteen thousand dollars of my own money trying to prepare the subgrade to progress Pleasant Hill. We got it down. We proof rolled it. Engineer failed it. At that point, I had to throw my hands up. There was no more additives I could put into the soil to make it hold and pass the proof roll. That time came, you know, the June third, uh, came around, we restarted the project when it got to be, uh, dry temperatures, when it was feasible to work. Dust, uh, chase stabs agreed with me that that, that the dirt is not able to be worked in this area until it gets, uh, to the temperature and the rain quits. The rain has quit. We have moved crews on. We are laying the last bit of sod on Pleasant Hill tomorrow. The road will be, uh, the job will be substantially complete as of tomorrow. I know it didn't go like anybody expected. Didn't go like I expected it to. I expect it to be done in the first, in the first year.
But would you not agree that from January one until June the third, zero work was done? Is all that weather related?
Yes, sir. You, so, the, the temperatures, so, so, we had to soil cement the ground, right? You have weather limitations with soil cement. It has to be above freezing, and it has to be dry. So, you have to put the ground, the dirt, on grade. It has to have a dump truck or motor grader ran over it, and it cannot move in, uh, miniscule. It can't move, and then I could go ahead and, and cement it. You have to wait se, it has to have seven days worth of curing time of above-temperature days for it to cure. We have, you don't get that in, in January, February, March, December sometimes. And so, I was fighting the weather, basically, from the time I left in mid-November to the time I came back in June. And that's the reason for the no-work days. And I had nothing below, sorry, I'm sorry.
What happened the last few weeks? You had to take the stuff back up that you put down? Did you not have to take some stuff up that you put down?
Yes, sir.
And redo it? What happened then?
So, the curb crew that I had subbed in, um, the way that the road was supposed to be built, we were supposed to project off of the existing edge of road and put a curb on two percent. Well, the curb crew came through, and they decided that it wasn't enough all, so they re-engineered it unbeknownst to us. And then once they put it down...
Who's the curb crew? Is that the civil engineer?
No, sir. It was Aztec. We subbed it to Aztec, and so, you know, they'd be a third-party contractor. We had help us on the project. So, when they put it in, we found places that were, were not with the plans. And so, we came up with, uh, so, we talked to Civil Inc., came up with a plan of action, and the plan of action was to remix in the areas and re-grade in the areas, which made us wait another seven days because we can't put asphalt until the, the project cures.
Did you ever work at night when you did work?
No, sir.
Why?
I don't have an answer for that, really.
You're all using all subwork?
No, sir. No, sir.
Well, how are these guys making a living? My, my brother-in-law owns a concrete company.
Yes.
And they did not shut down January, February, and March.
Yes.
They put in box covers, sidewalks, curbing gutters. That's what their job do.
And so, probably between, after I left Pleasant Hill, I went and built three more roads for a different engineer in a different county. My guys were working. They, they were working. I was at a point on... It was not my intent to leave Pleasant Hill, but when I got to a point of, I could not get anybody to work with me to progress the project, it was time to throw my hands up and, and leave because there was no other options, um, for progressing Pleasant Hill.
And then, and then you did some work at the airport.
Yes, sir.
And I know act of God, I know wind and all, but you had some lime or something piled up, and it, wind blew it on the aircraft and the hangars and...
Yes.
Twenty thousand dollars worth of cleanup or whatever had to take place with people's personal property.
Yes.
The board probably understand, please, that we're only paying two point five percent of this. FAA's paying ninety-five percent, MDOT's paying two point five, and we're paying two point five. So, out of that eight point eight million, we're in for about, we're in for about a hu, hundred and, excuse me, about two hundred and sixty thousand, thereabout, is what we're in for instead of the eight point eight million. But we're in a pickle because we need it done. We need the work done, and the grant's timing out. But I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I wouldn't know if I'd want you to do my driveway at my house, much less where airplanes are. I had residents calling me. They'd lived thirty years in that subdivision. Mayor, I left to go to the bank, and I came back, and I hit a drop-off and hit my head on the top of the car. They were four and five-inch drop-offs. And then we'd have to send engineering staff to go tell them to put barricades up. It's just been a train wreck. I know you probably do wonderful work all over the state, but this has been an issue. It really has. Mayor, when do, excuse me, when do the grant expire? Mr. May? It's not enough time to public notice and get bids again. Yes, sir. That's right. And they're the only bidder. It's not your fault that you're the only bidder, but that's how government gets in the pickles we're in sometimes because of the rules we put ourselves in. Nobody's fault in this room, but that's the pickle that we're in.
If the contract is, is approved, do you have any idea when you'd start on that airport project?
It would be spring. That's what, uh, Garver requested.
Okay, Garver wants it to be done in the spring of next year?
Yeah. They said they, they would leave it up to us to start right now and go through the winter months, which I'm not in favor of that in this area. Or go, start in the spring, and that's, that was my agenda to start it in the spring.
Have you got any direction on if the city, probably unfair to ask you, but the city tries to enforce five hundred dollars a day for eight months late? Have you thought about what that's going to be like?
It's going to be difficult.
I know all, all jobs are not good jobs, and sometimes...
All jobs are not good jobs. We, and, and Pleasant Hill is a bad job.
It was bad for me. My phone rang every week, couple times a day.
It's bad all the way around. It, it started bad. It was snake fit. But I, I will say that we do a lot of work. We employ a hundred and fifty people, and, and we do work all over the state. And you, these two jobs, Pleasant Hill, I'm not referring to the airport right at the moment, but Pleasant Hill is the worst job that we have going right now due to the stipulations that we were caught in.
Mayor Adams, I didn't catch this gentleman's name. Could you give your name and...
Alan Tatum. I'm the vice president of Phillips Contracting.
Alan Tatum, okay.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier that you couldn't get anybody to work with you. Can you tell me who that was that wouldn't work with you? And what were the circumstances and considerations that kept you from progressing?
Sure. So, the engineer that y'all have is Civil Inc., and they're one of the toughest engineers to work for. They take a, a no-tolerance policy towards, towards any kind of deviation from the handbook, the red book. And, you know, a lot of these engineers we work for, they, they understand leniency, and they understand that, yes, it's not exactly by the red book, but it's going to work, and it's going to be, uh, a long-lasting product, and we don't get that with Civil Inc.
But you understand as the buyer, we like to go by the book. We want the very best we can get, but I know there's got to be some gray. I'm looking at our engineer over here, Mr. Young. There's got to be some gray, but that's, there's a school on that road. There's an elder care facility. And I don't even know how many, twenty thousand cars a day. I might be off a little bit, but again, I'm not trying to embarrass you. I'd never embarrass you in public. I wouldn't want you to embarrass me, but we've been through a tough period with this thing.
Yes, sir.
I've had my peer elected officials in other cities and the counties say, what is going on? Y'all can't get a road done in six months? No, I guess we can't. But anyway, I, it's, it's hard to believe the weather just accounted for, for no work from January through June. I mean, goodness, there was short-sleeve weather at some points, some days in there, but maybe the soil wasn't dry. I wasn't digging in the mud. I probably should have been, but I wasn't digging in the mud.
Some of the extracurriculars that's happened?
Extracurricular?
You know, parking in the, just leave the vehicle parked in the street and have to go get somebody to move it.
Yep.
Have to get the police to get somebody to move it.
So, you got calls on complaints of vehicles, contract vehicles left in the middle of the street?
Just parked in the street, blocking, uh, in, at the turn, when you turn in off, to come into the neighborhood off the street.
Are you referring to...
They can't sit there and monitor every employee's vehicle, but if there be some common sense, you can't just leave your vehicle in the street.
Are you referring to Hillsdale or Ansdale Drive? Is that what you're referring to? Uh, were we working in the intersection at that time?
No.
No, we were...
There was nobody around. I had to, I think the chief had to send somebody out to find where the, where they were working and get us to go back and move it. But it was, it's not, it's not a big, it's just a little bit of a nuisance.
Right. This is the first I've heard.
If the board is so inclined to approve this, I'd like to just know what assurances you can give us that this project that we're looking at now, this runway and tarmac, can be done on time, and if not, I want you to give me your personal word. You'll never bid on another branch job again, ever.
Oh, well.
If it doesn't, if the next one doesn't go good, I don't want you to ever bid for us again.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. Yes, sir.
I mean, you just have to ensure the board. You're, you're who we're depending on. You really are.
Sure. Uh, you know, I have no doubt that, that we can do the project. I've got a good team built of four different...
With a new one?
Way out. Mr. May, it's probably four years on the grant cycle to complete?
Usually when, yes, four years from the grant acceptance, which if this is awarded denied, we would accept the grant denied. There would be four years according to the grant documents for completion.
Right.
But the construction contract would have its own, um, construction.
That's right. So, there's two different... Do you know the, the contract completion time and the contract documents?
I don't, I don't know what it'd be.
I don't know off the top of my head. I could find out, but I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say two hundred and seventy working days.
And we're talking about now, if this, I want to make sure we're talking about the South Apron Rehabilitation Phase Two. We're talking about the new projects, right?
That's right, the new projects. Two different timelines, one for contract and one for grant, but that's right. Well, if he, it would be from the notice to proceed. It would be from, and if it begins in the spring, it'd be two hundred and seventy, whatever the contract time is from the notice to proceed.
Phase two, taxway rehabilitation is five million nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, six hundred and sixty-five, five million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. City's portion is, board is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three sixty-six. The other bid is one point one six zero nine hundred, one million one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred for the Schedule One bid, and two million eight hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-five for Schedule Two. Again, FAA pays ninety-five percent, MDOT two point five, and we're in for two point five percent.
Mayor, I can't, I, I'm puzzled as to why we only had one bidder. This is almost ten million dollars worth of...
I don't know. Is the ARPA money still being used? Do you have any idea why? You, you bid, you did your part, but...
Right. I have no idea why. No, nobody else bid it. I knew plenty of people pull plans on it. Um, it's a kind of a specialized project, uh, being an airport, um, and lime and, and things like that are used. Um, it was a, it's a, a heavy subcontracted job, which means I have a, a pretty large asphalt contractor and electric, electrical contractor, uh, onboard to do it. Um, very minimal work on my part. Uh, I'm doing some dirt work, some stone, and some lime. Um, and of course, managing the project. I have project managers on it, things like that. But, uh, I do know Lehman Roberts, uh, was the last GC on the, on the first phase, and they didn't bid it. I, I talked to them personally, and they just opted out of it due to the scope of work it was.
But these are your bids, though, right? The five million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, six sixty-five, and the other two I mentioned?
Yes, sir.
I mean, ten million, thereabout, no matter how you, how you slice it. And you feel like you'd be able to get this, these done on a timely basis? Why?
Uh, because we're going to start it in a better manner, and I have a, a subcrew, like I said, several subcrews that are going to be all working together. It's not all of my work. Um, and, and I think there's plenty of time on the project, uh, to do it. I've worked with Susanna and Garver, uh, a couple of times, and, and we work good together, and, uh, I have no doubts that we can do the project and, and please view the mayor and the board and, uh, the city.
Mayor, I will say that Garver says that the bids we received are of good value. Because they, they, we don't think we got robbed on the bid or anything, so I think Garver did co, make, uh, a comment that, uh, it was a good, good bid for the amount of work that got to be done.
Okay. And I know there's some big jobs on here. Media and cable bearers, eleven million, about two million for Town of Gun Town, and several in six, seven hundred thousand dollar jobs.
I did not list. I li, I listed all of them in my area. Our, our office and our company stretches into Columbus, and we do a lot in Columbus. Uh, we have some fifteen million dollar jobs in Columbus and some five million dollar jobs going on in Columbus as well. I felt that I needed to keep it more isolated to the north part of the state, people that y'all might know.
We're going to, following Gammie's comment, we have the, September fifteenth is when we have the airport grant expires?
And one of your bids is good until tomorrow at five o'clock, correct? One of your bid, bids timeout tomorrow or the next day?
I believe I signed, I, I signed an extension on it. Susanna asked me to. I think I've signed two on the first one, two extensions.
Who'd you bring up with you today?
This is my son and a project manager for me, Alex Tatum.
Hi, Mr. Alex Tatum. You may want to move up here and get this one completed. You and your son, the grandson, anybody that'll, we just want it done right. Not trying to embarrass you. I know some jobs just don't go good.
Yes.
But man, this one, eight months late, it's just, we, I took a beating. Next time, I want to put your picture up on the sign and your home phone number so residents can call you instead of me.
Uh, I would say that I got plenty of calls as well, and I, and I explained to them the same thing, that I'm explaining to you about weather and delays. And I feel like some of it's my fault. I feel like most of it's not my fault due to the weather.
And if it doesn't come to fruition like it should, I'm sure Mr. Di will give us good, solid legal direction, which we'd rather not take, but...
I'd rather not take either.
You'll have somebody give you legal direction, too. I get that. But that's where we're at, board. I, I, I think we need to take it. I think we need to move forward and get it done, and hopefully runways are different than streets, or taxiways are different than streets. That's right.
I would give y'all my word that I would put the best of the best crews that I have on this particular project to make it go as smooth as I possibly can.
Thank you. Fair enough.
And you're recommending, if approved, you would start this spring?
Yes, sir. I would start as soon as the weather broken spring to give, uh, the best chance for productivity.
And we want you to come back and visit... And we want you to come back and visit with the board about one-fourth of the way through the project to give us an update.
Sure.
And we want to feel good about that, and then we want to update it about halfway through, and if we're feeling really good, then we'll all live happily ever after, how about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board, any other questions? Any motions?
Motion to approve, can we approve both of them?
I would recommend we take them individually, and just, Mr. May, just for clarification, on the taxiway rehab phase two, is the recommendation just for the base bid?
Yes, the base bid, and on the South Apron, it would be for schedule two.
For schedule two on that. I'd recommend taking them individually, and the recommendation on number five on your agenda, the taxiway rehab phase two, is for the base bid on...
Okay, I'll make that recommend, that motion.
Motion by Mr. Dickerson on the base bid of five million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars, is there a second? Second, Mr. Collins, all in favor? That's a miracle right there. That's a miracle. Passed, hundred percent. Next one would be the South Apron, and that's the phase two?
Phase two, and the recommendation is to award schedule two, which is a particular aspect of the bid package.
Which is the two million eight hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, correct?
Yes, sir, that is, that is correct. I'll make a motion to accept that one.
Motion to accept by Mr. Dickerson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Aldridge, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I appreciate y'all's time, and y'all can call me anytime if y'all want to talk about the project.
We want to talk about the good successes next time we're together, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum.
Thank you.
So this would be next on the agenda. Can you scroll it up? Are we through?
No, that's it.
Okay. This is new business. Board, we talked about the tax millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. We had a budget planning meeting, as, as you remember, then we also had a public meeting with public comments on the, on the millage rate. Any additional questions? I know that you're aware that we reduce into thirty-eight point zero five mil, thirty-eight zero five mil for the... Sorry.
Thirty-five point...
Excuse me, thirty-five point oh five, dropping three point four five mil is what, is what we're looking to do and recommended to do.
And Mayor, we just need a motion, second to vote. You have a, in the board's packet is the draft resolution that reflects that millage rate and the breakdown of the component parts of the millage rate, and that is consistent with the budget workshop and the budget hearing that the board has had previously. And the recommendation is to approve the millage rate in that amount, thirty-five point zero five mils.
Which is eight point nine six percent decrease from our previous millage. Wallace motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Earhart, Alman Earhart, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consideration of the proposed budget that of course concludes that millage rate for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, and ending on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. That's the large three-ring binder that you, that you have or have been given. Mr. Dickerson, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three, consideration to approve the final change order number two on the contract with Lewis Electric Incorporated in the deductive amount of thirty-six thousand seventy-seven dollars, decreasing the contract amount from two hundred and three thousand nine hundred dollars to one hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, and accept the project as complete and authorized final payment in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fourteen, fifteen cents for the project referenced to as College Road and Craft Road signalization. Basically, board, the thirty-six thousand oh seven seven coming out is because we didn't have to use the wooden poles, the metal poles made it in, we didn't think they would, and we were working feverishly to try to get it working before school started, so we had the wooden poles on standby and we don't have to use them now, is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, and the light's working?
Yes, sir.
And school traffic's happy? We've got some good positive comments, I don't know if the board has, but that, that light's been a big help for people going to and from school. Mr. Wallace, motion to approve the final amount, is there a second? Second, Mr. Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consideration of recommendation to approve East Area Project Two Task Order Number Four B with Neil Schaefer Incorporated in the amount not to exceed three hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. This is the engineering design work for this project area two, which is the east area.
So this would be for construction, engineering, and inspection. So the design's been complete, we've obtained the right of way, just a few minutes ago, you approved trade construction, and now we'll be starting the construction, and this is to get Neil Schaefer on board to help us keep him in, within spec.
Thank you. Any questions, board? This, this speaks to the wastewater and the water improvements.
In the annexed area, that's right.
In the annexed area.
This is in line with the other work that we've been doing, like in the South Area One and Two, and East Area One.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Wallace, motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dickerson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item five, consideration to approve change order number six on the contract with A and B Construction in the additive amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents, increasing the contract amount from eight million six hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents to eight million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-one cents for the project referred to as the City of Ollie Branch Public Works Complex, and this involves shoring up the angles and the, and the grade from where the Public Works building was built, is that right, Mr. Young?
Correct, there's some steep slopes that need to be stabilized. The previous administration had pulled this out of the bids, thinking that the public works team could handle it. It's been reevaluated, and now looking for a change order to allow the contractor to do the work.
What do you mean it was pulled out of the earlier bid?
They were going to do it in-house.
Okay, we, we tried, we were going to do it in-house...
Yes.
Until we realized the scope of what we were dealing with. Not that we couldn't do it, but it was a time element. You don't know what you don't know until that dirt gets to being moved around, and some's not good dirt. I'm seeing a head nod from Mr. Rose, so they just didn't have enough extra man-hours to do it. Is that right? Okay.
Yes, sir, there's a, you know, there's a cost to the city to do it in-house, and there's also a cost to do it. And it was my understanding, it was evaluated both ways, and this was the more efficient way to do it with the manpower we have.
Yep, and we'll be sending the manpower elsewhere and take the one fourteen, seven twenty-nine, forty-three payroll deduction, Mr. Rose, is that fine? Never mind, we'll, we'll let the board deal with this. One hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Gammage, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.